Didn't look any better than Larry.
All right, Matt, you're live.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the special meeting of the Jeffersonville City Council for May the 8th. It is just after 6:30, and I'll ask the city clerk to do a roll call.
Counselperson White.
Present.
Counselperson Burns.
Present.
Counselperson Paris.
Here.
Counsel vice president Maples.
Here.
Counselperson Croft.
Here.
Counselperson Webb.
Present.
Counsel president Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson Ellis.
Here.
Let the record reflect that we have seven council members present by a phone and two present here. Counselperson, Donnie Croft is present here, and so is counsel president Owen.
Okay, we don't have any minutes to approve. Let's go ahead and approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burns, second, Mr. Maples. Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel vice president Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel president Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Okay, is there any report of the clerk?
Uh, yes, I'd like to respectfully ask if, uh, is Larry Wilder on the call?
He is.
Uh, I would like for him to publicly state how the public now during these times and, well, even in regular times, how the, you can get something on the record and what the city clerk is allowed to do and not allowed to do, please?
Sure. So, so basically, the record of a meeting, truly the official record of the meeting is, are just the minutes of the meeting. And individual citizens have the right to make public comment by your created ordinance, based on your ordinance within that three-minute timeframe. Because we're in such a weird place, I realize that the ability to make your three-minute statement is something that is not practical. It would seem that if someone may, from the public, wants to make a public statement, they should submit what they believe would be a three-minute public statement, and it's gonna have to be read by someone. You know, they, I'm assuming they can ask the clerk to, if you all want to let the clerk read it in. But this, there's not a concept of just the public sending things to the clerk's office and saying, I want this to be in the meeting, record of the meeting.
And I- That should probably come through one of the council members. Claire?
Sure, absolutely. You know, and, and they can read at the meeting. But the problem we obviously have while we're doing these Zoom meetings is someone wants to send a written statement, and I get it and I understand it, and the public, you all have allowed the public to make comment. You don't even have to let the public make comment, but by ordinance, you've done that in 2008. So for the last 13 years, there's been public comment. So public has the right to make comment based on your ordinance. Figuring out how we're gonna do that now is, is an issue. It would seem that an individual has three, can comment, and I would suggest that because of the Zoom meeting, it's difficult for every citizen who wants to use their three minutes to make it. If they can just provide it to a council meeting or provide it to the clerk, and the clerk can see if someone on the council would be willing to read it in for that three minutes. But I don't want to get away from our three minutes, obviously, and I don't want to get away from our entire ordinance on procedure. So that, I mean, does everybody think that seems reasonable?
Larry, do those comments, if they're submitted in writing, do those have to be read or can they be added to the record into the minutes?
If you-
As submitted?
If you all choose to make them a part of the minutes, you can. It's not a practical part of minutes, but you can make anything you want a part of your minutes. But your record is the minutes. In other words, the record of the meeting isn't what you all talk about. The record of the meeting truly is, and Les and I have experienced this in tons of litigation. You know, people want to litigate the meetings, well, Les, what are the record, record of the meeting?
If it's not the minutes, it didn't-
Yeah, so, so, you know, attach them to the minutes if you all vote to adopt the minutes with that attachment.
Gotcha.
I, it's really weird, I real, it sounds odd.
Right, right. Is there anything else?
No, thank you.
No problem. We're gonna go into unfinished business. I skipped over claims because we don't have any claims for special meeting. Um, but number nine under unfinished business is 2020 OR 24, an ordinance of additional appropriation from the rainy day fund to fund the Jeffersonville Sustains COVID-19 Small Business Relief Program. This is, has been approved on the first and second reading, and there have not been any changes. There is going to be a resolution considered that will go along with this funding that lays out, and, and that was sent out a couple days ago. The, the two-page document that had all of the project, it was the project outline with all of the eligibility, eligibility requirements, as well as some exclusionary language that was sent out and attempted to be discussed at Wednesday's meeting. But that went out on Wednesday, and then before this meeting, actually, for the sustains program, I forwarded an email that had the actual application that will be live on the One Southern Indiana website once this is kicked off. So that resolution will go along with these, this funding, and they will run that program through One Southern Indiana.
So if I may, Ms. Owen, ask a, a quick question. So there, the Exhibit A, which I referenced, is the, the initial document you provided, correct? Did you-
Correct.
B and make it the application or not?
Uh, we don't need to, I don't, unless somebody feels that's necessary.
Uh, Mr. Owens, one of the things that concerns me is, uh, I know of some small businesses that don't have access to One Southern Indiana's website. Is it possible to put this application in the paper in some way so that everybody has, well, at least a majority of people have access to it?
We would, um, I, I don't know the answer exactly to that. Um, I, I, I am comfortable saying that we would be able to make an application, a physical application available for someone who didn't have internet access. Uh, but I don't know exactly the step we would take to get that. I hadn't considered that before now, but I, I think we could certainly accommodate so that someone could submit an application even if they couldn't do it online. I'm sure we can find a way to make that happen.
Okay.
No one has any further, I make a motion to approve on the third and final.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maples and a second by Mr. Webb to approve 2020 OR 24 on the third and final reading. Ms. Gill?
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel vice president Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel president Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Thank you. Number 10 under unfinished business is 2020 OR 25, an ordinance of additional appropriation from the rainy day fund for COVID-19 emergency housing. This passed on the first and second reading in the amount of $10,000. I see Ms. Lindley is here from the Health Department, if anybody has any questions or comment, or if we want to just have a motion.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Burns and a second by Mr. Croft. Ms. Gill?
Counselperson White.
I do have a couple of questions, I couldn't, it wouldn't come in through, I don't guess.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you. Go ahead.
All right, uh, a couple, and I guess they're for Larry and Les more than anything. My question would be, if, if this money is, is spent, and so we're gonna house people at the Red Carpet Inn, what, what is the liability that the city is assuming for potential problems at the Red Carpet Inn? Um, since while we're the, is this directly going to us, um, on us? Or how will, how does that shake out, Larry? Could I, could you answer that?
So my observation and belief is this. Uh, and Ms. Lindley, unfortunately, you get to hear this. My opinion is you pass the money to them and they're on the hook for whatever happens there. In other words, you're just providing funding.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure that that was the case, that we weren't accepting any real liability from this, that we're just giving to somebody else who's assuming that liability.
Right, and of course, I'm not gonna be disingenuous, if anything happens, we're gonna get sued. But I truly don't believe that we have exposure because we are funding something off-campus, so to speak, and we're handing it off to that governmental agency, and they're responsible for it.
Okay, and then my second question, so, it's my second question, and thanks, Larry. My second one is, if this money were to run out, which I don't know if it will or will not, is, is our plan then to continue as needed, or is this it? Is this what we've decided to give and then we will be over? And if anybody that is part of, wants to chime in on that, feel free.
Ms. Lindley, I would let you chime in if you have anything to add, but-
Yes, um, there, there is a grant that has been awarded. The money is not here yet, it should be here next week. And there is funding in the grant to take over the hotel rental. Also, as far as the liability, according to Catalyst and their attorney, they are, they are liable for any damages.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
The liability issue, I believe, is also outlined in the MOU that I sent out between Catalyst and the Red Carpet Inn.
I would just add that I sat in on a conference call yesterday at Pastor Moon's invitation. And I know that there was a lot of discussion about how operationally this whole, whole idea is gonna work and how logistically it's gonna work. And I know that they've even talked about, you know, negotiating with the, with the hotel. You know, this is the first, you know, seed money in good faith for the, um, the grant money that's coming from the state through the county health department. So I think, I think they have a good, a good grasp on logistically how to make this work. And, and Dr. Yezel said when he met with us on Wednesday, I think a couple times, you know, if this is not a viable solution to keep people safe and out of the tents, uh, then they're, they're gonna continue with the tents until they have, have the viable solution to, to make those come down. Um, I think everybody's goal is to see that, uh, come out of the, the Clayesburg neighborhood and, and also keep public health as, as the number one priority. So I applaud the, um, Health Department for working to that end, and I applaud Catalyst for, for getting those tents up as quickly as they did because it was the immediate response to an immediate problem. And, and I think that, that those measures that they took probably saved from an outbreak at the shelter. Hopefully, this will help us move, move on and into the next phase of that response. Is there anything else? We did have a motion and a second to approve on the third and final reading, so I'll go ahead and take the roll call.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Bill, you're muted.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel vice president Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel president Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
All right, um, the other, uh, business that we have on the agenda is Resolution 2020 R6. Um, this is the COVID-19, um, response. It outlines how we're going to, uh, fund the initiative with the additional appropriation that we just did, the Jeffersonville Sustains Initiative. Basically, hopefully you've had time to read that over. There were, uh, there was a typo that I asked Larry to correct, um, this afternoon, and that essentially was in how the process of this was gonna be paid. The process is laid out in the resolution that, um, a claim would come in for the first $100,000 plus the administration fee of three and a half percent. That would get sent to One Southern Indiana. Uh, their committee would review applications, and as they were, as necessary, if they needed additional funding, uh, to fund applications that were eligible, we would send the remaining funding in $50,000 increments. Um, and the clerk is gonna work with me to get those claims processed through the controller's office. And the controller will issue all of those monies to One Southern Indiana as those claims come in. One Southern Indiana will be initiating the actual loan to the individual businesses. Trying to think, the only other, I think that's all that, that's the only clarification that we had to make this afternoon, that the city is not going to issue checks to individual businesses. Uh, the city will issue the funds to fund the program through One Southern Indiana, and they will work with the businesses to make those payments and then, um, remit those back once it's time for them to be repaid.
So will Exhibit A be attached to the resolution? Because the administration has not seen any of the program guidelines or anything.
Unless I apologize that the revised, the last revised piece didn't have that exhibit. That exhibit was the, did you all ever get the two pages that Matt referred to that he sent back, sent out on Wednesday?
No.
Well, Les, what I'll do is I'll forward you an, an email that's gonna have, it's, it was the first draft. It'll be five pages, and it'll have Exhibit A. It just, just- Exhibit A will be there. Is that okay?
Okay, that, that's fine, just wanna make sure we have Exhibit A so administration knows exactly what the purpose, what the program entails. Because I, I know there was some discussion at the last meeting, who is eligible, who's not eligible. And I, and I had a question, is, is someone who has received assistance to the federal pro, uh, programs through the Small Business Administration, all this that, that Congress has enacted, they've received, uh, assistance from those programs, are they eligible or not eligible for this program?
So the, the application does ask applicants to list if they've received any federal funding, any state funding, or any, uh, local relief funding. Um, and those indications, it asks if they have applied or if they have been awarded, and if they've been awarded, how much. And those, uh, factors will factor into the scoring that the committee, uh, uses to consider to whether or not to grant applications.
The resolution?
There anything from, yes, resolution number six.
Motion to pass.
Motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Maples to approve 2020 R6. Anything else? Do a roll call, please.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel vice president Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel president Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Thank you all very much. Um, with that, uh, there is, in the program documents, there is a mention of the committee that is gonna oversee this program. That committee is made up of two individuals from One Southern Indiana, or appointed by One Southern Indiana, and then two, I'm sorry, three individuals that were appointed by the city council. And there were three individuals that came to mind from, uh, the group that were, helped put this together. Um, I was gonna nominate Josh Cornberg. Dr. Cornberg is the director of development at Ivy Tech. Uh, he works with and around grant funding, um, quite a bit in his, in his job. Mr. Burns, I think you had mentioned, um, Don Allen with First Savings Bank, and then also mentioned was Mark Munzer, who is with One Southern Indiana, I'm sorry, with, uh, New Washington State Bank. Unless there's any objection, I think those are three very qualified folks who are, um, well in tune with the community and with the, this realm of, of handling money. So I would entertain a motion to, to any effect.
All, all three of those gentlemen would be outstanding choices. Can I nominate all of them with one motion?
Yes, you can.
Well, then I would like to do that.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, there was a motion to nominate, um, Mr. Allen and Dr. Cornberg by Mr. Hawkins and seconded by Mr. Webb. We'll do a roll call, I didn't prepare you for this one, I'm sorry.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel vice president Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel president Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine, nine zero.
All right, um, Mr. Wilder, you, do you have anything to add?
About the, the, the ordinance or just in general?
No, just in general.
I'm just making sure. So Les, I have a question. What's our anticipation of when we're gonna go back to a live meeting setting? And will it be limited numbers of, of public when we get to that place? Is that what's your understanding?
Right, right now, I've been told the governor's order to allow these meetings is effective through June 4th.
Okay.
Uh, but we're also getting indication that it, it's probably gonna go beyond that. But right now, I can just tell you June 4th. I, I, my, my, my gut feeling is they're gonna allow this probably through, uh, up through that, at least through that July, late July, when he opens everything back up, but, yeah, you know.
So what we'll do as a body, uh, on your own time, as you're sitting around thinking about what do we need to do going forward? About what type of temporary rules we may want to adopt to facilitate the ability for the public to have input, like we had this little discussion at the beginning, almost in the same vein as public comment?
Now, I can tell you, what we have done, the planning commission and the BZA, by law, we've, we have to have public hearings for those matters. And we've, we've conducted those meetings online, but we've still, we've had one person at the council chambers on the Zoom call for anyone who wanted to come in and give public comment. But we strongly encourage that they email it or call it in in advance to the meeting, and then staff would read, uh, that comment regarding a matter that's on the docket. So that's how we, and it's, it's worked quite, they worked quite well these last couple meetings with BZA and the planning commission. I, Bill, Bill's, Bill's on air and, and Steve, you know, so it's, we didn't have any problems.
So with that said, think about it, and maybe that's what we want to try to do. And then the other thing I would suggest is we consider thinking about what we're gonna do in, uh, August, September, when we go in chambers, if there's a limitation on the number of people that are allowed to, to gather in one place. But just, it just generally, just kind of think about what you, what, what we want to do to maybe open up the line of comment to the place it was when we were meeting live. And that's all I have. Thanks, everybody, for, for accommodating these pressing needs, too. And again, thanks for being so conscientious during this time that, that, you know, we're, we're all paddling waters. Nobody else has paddled ever before.
Thank you, Mr. Wilder. Mr. Merkley, do you have anything to add?
No.
Uh, Ms. Metcalf, did you have anything?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, um, we'll go to council comments. Mr. White?
Thank you. Um, I just, again, would like to thank the council for, uh, supporting and passing both measures, uh, tonight. I think we are, uh, doing the right thing. Um, I also want to thank again the Clark County, uh, Health Department and Dr. Yezel, our health officer in particular. He calls this measure that we're doing the CDC gold standard, and, um, he doesn't have, uh, and, and it was, it was great to work with him, and, and he's, uh, very hopeful, as well as I am, that, uh, the problems that, uh, may arise will be handled, uh, efficiently and effectively. So a shout out again to Dr. Yezel, and, uh, it was great to work with him to find a resolution to this issue.
Okay, Mr. Burns?
No comment.
Uh, Mr. Paris?
I would like to, um, uh, say something about Jim Moon, um, as far as, uh, I wanted to, uh, I wanted the clerk to put his statement in the record. But I don't know, by reading this, it would take longer than three minutes. But I'm, but he is gonna be, um, on the agenda, you know, in the next meeting. And so I think he can address some of those things and any questions that you have for him. But I've, uh, the last couple of days have spoken to him quite a bit, and, uh, no, he's in, um, he's in, you know, in a very stressful situation, first of all. But I think, I feel like, considering that, he's done a wonderful job. There are no positive cases, luckily, thank God. And, um, you know, for the system they have in place, uh, seems to be working. And with this change, it's gonna give him, uh, you know, it's definitely gonna make his job tougher. Uh, he's gonna be spread in maybe two or three different places. But he, he agreed that he, you know, that he would do it. And, and so that's, that's why I voted yes, uh, tonight, 'cause he, you know, we've been going back and forth. I just didn't, all I wanted to do is try to help him and not make things tougher. And it seems like, uh, you know, hopefully we will move forward and, uh, continue to, you know, have, uh, positive cases. The other thing that I found was interesting is that, um, there are fewer clients in the shelter right now, which, um, you know, their, their average is about 109, and there is 72, uh, this week at some time. So, but they were, you know, more, more coming in. But I, I just want to say that, um, you know, he's put his life into this, and, um, I think he's done a wonderful job. And, you know, hopefully he can answer some of the, I think, misinformation that was put out against him, um, on Monday, you know, at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Maples? Mr. Croft?
I have nothing.
All right, uh, Mr. Webb?
No comment.
Okay, Mr. Ellis?
No comment.
Mr. Hawkins?
Uh, no comment.
All right, I didn't miss anybody, did I? Trying to keep track of you guys on the screen.
Missed you, Phil.
Matt, um-
Yes?
If I could ask Joe, uh, Paris, um, when you spoke of misinformation, were you referring to my comments or something else?
Yeah, there were some things that, that were said in this letter that he, he responded to, you know, in his letter. And did, were you able to read that?
I have, I've been, I haven't read it yet.
Well, I, I would suggest you read it. I mean, the main thing is for us to all communicate and, um, you know, work together and, um, and help each other, you know, make the community better, and, and so-
But what was the misinformation?
Did, I mean, Mr. White, it's, it's, it's council comments. So, I mean, if you have a comment, if you guys need to converse about- have a comment, uh, if you guys need to converse about, um, you know, clarif, clarifying something, we, we can, we can work on that after we get through the, the rest of the meeting, um, did you have anything else?
That's all.
Sorry to cut you off, but it is, um, after 6:00 on a Friday, and this is our third public meeting this week, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody on the council for, uh, unanimous, unanimously supporting both initiatives tonight through this week, um, nothing, none of this is gonna be perfect, but hopefully we are working, uh, towards positive solutions for the rest of the community on multiple fronts, and I think we have a lot to be proud of as a council, and a lot to be proud of as a city, so, um, with that, also thank you to all of those others who have, uh, continued to work with us, such as the Health Department, Catalyst, many others, um, and One Southern Indiana, um, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Okay.
All right, motion by Mr. Burns and second by Mr. Paris, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.